All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, December 9th, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we're going to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Adam. Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Buchalato.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Here.
And Mayor Walter, here. At this time, please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed upon a future agenda. However, the members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are noted for discussion and legal action. I do have two requests to speak. First, we have Mr. John Abrams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May it please the council, my name is John Abrams, 671 Cedar Avenue. I served the community of Florence as a flight paramedic for many years. My wife and I became residents of the town three years ago. I come before you today representing a group of taxpayers, including both homeowners and business owners. Our members have been trying to bring a stop to ongoing illegal, intrusive, and disruptive events in our area of Florence. Specifically, the maintenance and riding of off-road vehicles by children illegally on city streets, as well as private property without permission. The epicenter of this issue lies in the empty lot at Butte and Plant across from the winery. These vehicles are extremely loud and cause dust and rocks to be thrown into homes, as well as disrupting paid events at the winery. While some improvements have been made, these are primarily due to some perpetrators moving out of the area. With more than 100 calls to the police department over the last three years, we have been given excuse after excuse as to why this cannot be stopped. The town code expressly lays out prohibited use of these vehicles and noise and dust ordinances as well. The police have repeatedly laid the burden to stop these disruptions onto the homeowners and businesses, stating everything from signs being required to officers needing to visually see lawbreakers despite being given video evidence repeatedly. Typical response times for these calls have slipped to over an hour in some cases, making officer visualization of acts nearly impossible. A meeting with Chief Walls last year brokered a deal with local parents for homeowners to stop calling police if the kids moved away from the yards. This should never have happened. Owners of the land were never contacted nor consulted on this agreement, bypassing their rights to refuse the use of their land. The current situation continues to escalate as both this issue and repeated noise complaints of the same perpetrators go unresolved. The landowners and adjacent properties have never given any permission for any off-road vehicle to be on their land. It would seem that after three years of this, the police are either unable or unwilling to enforce the town code. The failure to do so lies solely with our police and not with the callers. Over the last year, homeowners' calling are met with ever-increasing aggressiveness and unprofessional manners, not only by the dispatch center, but also by responding officers. Repeated reports to superior officers and supervisors have only resulted in the escalation of this unprofessionalism. Often, officers arrive at callers' homes to confront them even prior to going to the reported incident location. In fact, all we as a community have ever tried to do is protect children and return the area to the peaceful neighborhood we all moved to this beautiful town to enjoy. No one I have ever spoken to has agreed to do business or live next to a dirt bike track. We are happy to work with the authorities in any way if mutual respect is maintained. We put this onto the council and to the police department to come up with a definitive plan of action to be put forth by the council with police support. I thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and give direction just for our town manager and police chief to respond, and we do have your contact information. Thank you. Ms. Is Sherry Butler.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Walter, members of town council, and to the public at large. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, where I'm employed as a special events director. So I'm just here, as usual, to talk about the next couple of events, and the one coming up is this Saturday. It is the Florence Farmers Market, which is an ongoing market, 8 until noon at McFarland State Historic Park. And this time, we have an art market that's right at Padilla Park. So working in conjunction with the Town of Florence, we're able to host the art market there. So it will be an opportunity for people to come to see Santa Claus without having to go to the mall. They'll be able to shop for gifts, even make crafts and art as well. So there'll be music over at Padilla Park. One of our local vendors actually is working with Keith Raya, as are we, to get music at the park this weekend. It's from 8 till noon. It's a community event, and it's a nice way to give home-based businesses, as well as other businesses, an opportunity to get out, make things, and such. So we do have a new banner right over by the post office. It's the Florence Farmers Market banner, and you'll see some of our sponsors featured right there as well. So many thanks to everybody who makes it happen, and I appreciate you, Mayor Walter, the Community Services Department, and all of our vendors, everybody that makes these events happen. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do for the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce and for bringing these amazing events to life. Is there anybody else in the audience or online that would like to speak at this time? All right, we are closing our first call to the public. Moving into unfinished business, item A is discussion approval/disapproval of the December 2nd, 2024 town council minutes. Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, we wanted you to have the ability to approve your last set of minutes, so they've been brought forward for your consideration tonight.
Counselor, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the December 2nd, 2024 town council minutes.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is discussion approval/disapproval of accepting the register of demands dated November 30th, 2024, in the amount of $3,372,124.18. Mr. Dudding.
Nothing to add to the report, ma'am.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, we need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the register of demands dated November 30th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudding. Moving into our call to the council. Before we proceed into our call to the council, we have a special call to the council that I'm going to take a liberty among with our council colleagues. Tonight, we gather not just to celebrate a remarkable individual, but to honor a true pillar in our community, Lisa Garcia. It is with immense pride and gratitude that we are here before you as mayor and council. Can we all meet over at the... So Lisa and I usually work together on a lot of writing and the agenda. There was no way to proceed with this portion without our current town manager, Mr. Bruce Walls, and his staff that came together to make all of this happen. I want to share a few words before I have you speak. Lisa Garcia, we are presenting you with a key to the town of Florence. This is the final key that's going to be presented on behalf of this council. To you. Lisa has dedicated herself to the art of public service. She exemplifies what it means to be a true municipal leader. Her distinguished career in municipal administration has left an indelible mark on our community, transforming challenges into opportunities and bringing innovative solutions to the forefront. Through her unwavering commitment, Lisa has demonstrated that public service is not just a profession, it is a calling. Tonight, we are not just honoring an individual. We are celebrating a spirit of public service that exemplifies the very best of what our town represents. Lisa Garcia embodies the ideals of dedication, integrity, and service that we strive for as a community. Therefore, it is only fitting that we acknowledge your outstanding contributions in a significant manner. As a token of our appreciation and our recognition of your exceptional leadership, it is our distinct honor to present you with this key to the town. This key is symbolizing our trust, our gratitude, and our deep respect for everything that you do. Lisa, may this key serve as a reminder of the profound impact that you have made and that you will continue to make in shaping our community and beyond. Please join me in a round of applause for Ms. Lisa Garcia.
This is my last opportunity. This is my last opportunity to tell the council, "You violated the open meeting law." "This is not on your agenda."
We had the attorney approve it.
A current event. I just want to thank the current council, the previous councils that I've had the honor to work for and with, and the future council. It has been my complete and total joy to work for the town of Florence, so thank you. Thirty years, town clerk, as well as deputy town manager, as well as you've served as interim town manager for approximately two years. Thank you.
All right. Our call to the council continues under current events. Councilmember Adam.
Well, this is a very hard one, and I just want to say, I have been to probably almost as many meetings as those of you on council as a resident, but I had no idea what it's like to be on council. And I was just having a conversation with councilmember Larson, and I was saying, "I have so much respect for these people who are giving up their little bit of time they have with their families." These are all working people. They're working mothers and fathers. And I think back to when I had a job, I cannot imagine doing the work of this council and adding all that. I have learned so much from each one of you. And I'll only call out councilmember Larson because she's the youngest. And I told her, I feel like I watched her grow up on the dais because she was pregnant with her first child when she first came to council. And all these years, you watch how much they learn and the questioning and how you make your decisions, and that is something that's only learned up here, right? You think you know when you sit out there. I'll say it was me. I thought I knew everything, and I sat there and said, "Well, why don't they do this? Why don't do that?" It's so much more than what you actually see. And I just want to say, I have so much respect and thank you all.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, I want to say thank you for the years of dedication that you've given here on the dais. When I came on two years ago, I just saw a small picture, but now I see what the big picture is. When I first came on two years ago, I had the deer in the headlights look. And just trying to go through shadowing some of you guys has definitely been an experience, just learning. And you guys are just full of so much knowledge, especially when it comes to stuff that we've done and better practices. And I'll forever cherish that, those times that we had and events that we've been to. So taking care of business and having fun at the same time. So on behalf of myself and my family, I just want to say thank you for your years of continued service to our town, and I just wish you the best of luck, and God bless you all.
Councilmember Buchalato.
I also just wanted to say thank you to each one of you for everything that you've brought to the council and for welcoming Mo and myself on, you know, two years ago. As Kathy said, you really have no idea until you get up here. And you've, you guys have made the hard times a little easier for us and gave us some insight to why things are working the way they are, and I truly appreciate that. I also appreciate being able to have our conversations, agree or not, in a respectful manner. So I just wanted to say thank you all and, you know, good luck to all your future endeavors, and thank you for giving back to our town.
Councilmember Larson.
I knew I'd be really nervous tonight. For some reason, I'm never nervous, but tonight I knew it would be. So I prepared something, so bear with me. It is with a mixture of gratitude and humility that I stand here today on my last day as a member of town council. For two terms, the time has come for me to step down and pass the baton to the next generation of leaders. It's hard to believe that my journey here has come to an end, but I can say without a doubt it has been one of the greatest honors of my life to serve this community. When I first ran for office, I was motivated by my deep desire to give back to the town that gave so much to me and my family. Florence is a place that has always been full of opportunity, rich in history, and most importantly, a place where people can care about one another. We are a community bound together by a shared vision of growth, progress, and service to one another. Over the past eight years, I've had the privilege to witness firsthand the incredible work that goes into shaping this town into what it is today and what it will be tomorrow. Whether it's been working on infrastructure improvements, advocating for local businesses, or collaborating on programs that make Florence a better place to live for our families, I'm proud of the work we have done together. We face challenges, of course, but these challenges have only made us stronger, more resilient, and more determined to build a future where we can all be proud of. But as we all know, his real strength in this town lies in its people. It's residents of Florence, those who showed up at town hall meetings, volunteered at local events, and supported our schools that make this place so special. We are the heart and soul of this town, and it has been an absolute privilege to serve you. I'll forever be grateful for the trust and confidence you placed in me, and I hope that I've been able to repay that trust with the work I've done alongside my fellow council members. I also want to thank my dedicated staff here at the town of Florence. You all work tirelessly to make our town run smoothly, and your professionalism, expertise, and commitment to this community have been invaluable. I'm proud to have worked alongside each of you and always appreciated the support you've given me during my time in council. As I prepare to leave this role, I'm confident that Florence will continue to thrive. We are at the crossroads of such potential, and I know that with the leadership in place, Florence will continue to grow, evolve, and adapt to the changing times while staying true to the values that make our community so unique. I want to thank my children. They've seen the challenges and rode along with every emotion. That's good. Sorry. They've rearranged their schedules. They sat patiently. My mom got stuck with our long phone calls. I knew that that quick run to the grocery store would be 45 minutes long if I ran into anybody. They grew up in the public eye, knowing one wrong move and mom would know about it before they had a chance to try to explain. I thank them for always having patience with me as they navigated through life together and for always being the rocks and the reason I do what I do. I hope that future generations can see what we've done and be excited to serve their community as well. Finally, to my fellow council members, past and present, thank you for your collaboration, your friendship, and your unwavering dedication to Florence. Each of you have taught me something, and I leave this position in a deeper understanding of the power of teamwork and the importance of listening to those that we serve. Florence has been my home for many years, and though my time on council is ending, my commitment to this community will never waver. I'll continue to support the work you all do and cheer on the progress and positive changes we'll continue to see for years ahead. Thank you, Florence, for allowing me the honor of serving you. It has been a true privilege.
Councilmember Neal.
It has been a very long four years. First off, I missed a whole lot of Monday night football. Football is life. I'm playing, y'all. I absolutely love this town. I was born right here in that hospital, and they gonna lay me right on out there in the dirt next to my folks when I go. I love this place. I honestly do. Still remember stepping on this council thinking, "I'm gonna change the world when I get there." And yeah, real quick, I got a lesson in you don't know Florence the way you think you know Florence, even being here for 40-some years. And I'd really like to thank the council, especially the GOAT, Lisa. Man, they taught me so much about my so-called town that I was calling it. Mostly, I would love to thank my wife. My wife. Twenty-five years coming up. She's awesome. Y'all know we got 10 children, right? I do nothing until she called me and it's time to hit somebody. That's my job. Everything else is her. And she's awesome, amazing. I love you. My children, who, most of them honestly abused me being on council. And twisted it to their own will. They did make a lot of sacrifices, like you said, and miss daddy on a lot of things. And I thank them for that because they just still kept loving me and understanding after they was done with their attitudes. My mama, y'all, my mama here, y'all. That's my mama. Who pushed me to be a lot more than what I was. I tell y'all real quick, in high school, I was an athlete. I was a beast, too. I was an athlete. Shush. I was a beast. I can say, "Shut up now. Go to the parking lot now. I'm done." She kicked me out the box because she knew I was abusing it because she said I was smarter than what I was being. And that's just one of the ways she pushed me. And the box, if y'all don't know the box, that's special ed. That's what we used to call it back in the day. I was just in there trying to waste time and not go to a real class. She saw that. But she's always been the number-one fan. I just love to bring up the fact that when I got on this council, I remember I came in saying something about people from Florence ain't gonna go for that, this and that. And I remember Walter said, "Well, where's Florence at?" There was nobody in these seats, nobody. I'll have to say, in my four years, now every council meeting has abundant of people, abundance of people. And I think that's great that people are coming out and showing up for this town that I love so much. I've learned a lot, and I'm ready to be at home on Mondays and Wednesdays and Thursdays. And any other day, Lisa called me and told me to get my behind up here to this place. New council. Pray, pray, pray. Then when you get tired of praying, pray some more. Please make the best decisions for my town because I showed up and going nowhere, and I'll be right here to give you some bad business. I'll be here. Not no more. You ain't gotta sit next to me no more. I'm tired. You always touching me. Me and Pierre were real, we best friends. I was about to tell him. I know we got a long night. I know we got a long night. And I, I love Florence, and I will always love Florence, and I will always be here for anything that the new council needs. Lisa or Chief Cliff, you've still got forty-five minutes to not get beat up. If we're not out of here, I'm beating you up. I get to say one last time. Go, go first.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
This is a bittersweet night. Four years ago, I put on this tie, and I sat in front of the polls and I asked people to vote for me, and you guys voted for me and put me in this position. My only hope is that I did everything I possibly could to make you guys proud, make the right decisions for this town. We had some tough decisions to make. We had some easy decisions. We had some controversial decisions. And together as a council, I think we did a very, I think we did an awesome job. There's so much more in this town than there was four years ago. I think we're moving in the right direction. The new council, four years ago, council member Judy Hughes told my wife, "I hope you're ready to give your husband up because you're not gonna see him for the next four years." And, you know, new council, you guys are gonna be busy. There's gonna be a lot of meetings to go to, a lot of conferences, a lot of boards and liaison positions that you'll have to take care of and be at and represent this town for. Not only in the town, but throughout the state, because not only are we, you know, advocating for things here in our town, we're also advocating with the state and other positions to help with some of the things that we need here in this town. I have been honored to sit and make decisions next to all of you guys. I'm gonna miss all you guys, and I won't be too far because I'll still be sitting out there paying attention to what's going on. I might get into some of the other boards and things to see what's going on. I wish the new council luck. I wish those that are leaving good luck on what you guys do next. I told my wife that, you know, when one door closes, another one opens. So, see you guys on the other side. Thank you, guys.
So, I wrote down just a few words, and I want to tell, let you know, that when I started writing the few words tonight, it almost started into an update to the state of the town. And then I said, "No, this is not what this purpose is," and I refined, and I refined again. So, this is my very brief thank you to our community. I am up here before you this evening, filled with a profound sense of gratitude and reflection. And as my time as mayor comes to a bittersweet close, serving this beautiful town has been one of the greatest honors of my life. So first, I want to express my heartfelt thanks to my fellow council members, both currently and those that I have served with in the past. Your support, your collaboration, and your unwavering commitment to serving our community has made the shared achievements that we've accomplished very meaningful and, above all, possible. Together, we have navigated challenges. We've celebrated success, and we fostered a brighter future for Florence. And I'm proud of what we have accomplished as a team. To our incredible staff, thank you so much for all of your hard work and for your dedication. And ladies and gentlemen, our staff is the most dedicated staff. They go above and beyond, and I truly mean that. Your relentless pursuit of excellence and your passion for the town are inspiring. You are the backbone of our community, and it has been a privilege to work alongside of you. I will forever cherish the memories and the remarkable things that we have achieved together. We've put on brand-new activities and events. We've made some fantastic advancements in the Town of Florence, and I'm excited to see that momentum continue onto our next council and to see what you create and do together. To my family. I don't cry. You guys have absolutely been my foundation throughout this entire journey. My daughter was two when I ran, and my middle son was four, and my oldest was ten, and they're all here right now, which is amazing. At twenty-two, fourteen, and sixteen, my mom and my dad is watching online. They have stepped in and just helped so much. So I had this opportunity to serve, as well as my husband. Just the support has been amazing. You guys have truly been my light. Thank you for believing in me, and thank you for your strength. I don't cry. Okay, ready? All right. So as I step away from this role, I carry with me a heartfelt love for Florence and a very strong sense of gratitude. I'm excited to see what the future holds for our town and the wonderful people. Thank you for the opportunity and the privilege to serve as your mayor. This is not goodbye, but this is going to be a new chapter for all of us. Let's continue to work together for the betterment of Florence, and God bless. All right. At this time, our council is going to exit the stage, and I am going to call forward for the new swearing-in of our new council members.
I'd like you to stand like right here in front of this so that we can get really good pictures.
Okay. See if I can hold all this and do this all at once. Nah, I'm good. Thank you. At this time, if you would, please raise your right hand, and please repeat after me. I, Keith Eaton.
I, Keith Eaton.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And all ordinances of the Town of Florence.
And all ordinances of the Town of Florence.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of mayor.
And I will faithfully, let's slow that a little bit.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of mayor.
Discharge the duties of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And if Mr. Eaton's family could come up for pictures? If Mr. Eaton's family could please come up for some pictures? We'll be all right. I'll go a little slower. If you would, please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, James T. Bencina.
I, James T. Bencina.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And all ordinances of the Town of Florence.
And all ordinances of the Town of Florence.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I'll bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
I'll faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the council member.
Of the council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And if family can come up?
Hello. Now I understand you have some family you wanted up here with you.
No, it's okay.
You sure?
Yes.
All right.
All right. If you would, please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, Sheri L. Bedford.
I, Sheri L. Bedford.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Con-
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And all ordinances of the Town of Florence.
And all ordinances of the Town of Florence.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance to the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of council member.
I will discharge the duties of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the second part of the meeting and the first meeting of your new council. What an amazing group tonight. Ms. Garcia, roll call, please.
Mayor Eaton.
Here.
Councilmember Buchalato.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Bencina.
Here.
Councilmember Bedford.
Here.
We have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. As the Town of Florence welcomes the new council, it is vital to pause and honor the service and contributions of our outgoing council members. Their dedication to time, energy, and expertise has been instrumental in advancing the community's interest and has made a lasting impact on Florence. Recognizing their efforts goes beyond formality. It's an expression of gratitude for their hard work and unwavering commitment to public service. Their leadership has been vital, pivotal, in shaping the policies and initiatives that guide our town, embodying the values of dedication, collaboration, and integrity that define effective governance. I'll go down the floor for items 10A through 10D, issuing service awards to outgoing members. Johnny Mendoza, would you please join me over here? I'm loud. I'm loud anyway normally, so. How about that? Okay. So Johnny, today we gather to express our heartfelt gratitude to you. For four years of dedicated service to the Town of Florence, Johnny has been a tireless advocate for our community, and his contributions during his time on the council have made a lasting impact. From the very beginning of his tenure, Johnny brought a clear focus and passion- From the very beginning of his tenure, Johnny brought a clear focus and passion to improving the infrastructure of our town. He recognized that strong infrastructure is not just about roads, water systems, and facilities. It's about laying the foundation for a thriving and resilient community. Johnny worked diligently to address infrastructure needs, ensuring that Florence remains a place where residents can live safely and comfortably, and where businesses can grow and succeed. Johnny's dedication to Florence extended beyond council chambers. He understood that the best decisions were informed by listening to the voices of the people he served. His open-door approach and willingness to engage with residents ensured that their concerns and ideas were heard, valued, and reflected in the work of council. Johnny, your contributions to the town of Florence will be remembered not only for the tangible improvements that you've been championed, but also by the integrity, care, and dedication that you brought to this role. You have shown us what it means to serve with purpose, and heart, and our community is stronger because of your efforts. On behalf of the town of Florence, its leadership, its residents, we thank you for your service, your commitment, and your advocacy. As you conclude your time on council, please know that your impact will continue to be felt, and your legacy of service will inspire others to follow in your footsteps. Congratulations, Johnny. So. All right, so tonight, outgoing members will get some awards tonight. You were probably wondering why their nameplates weren't correct up there, so they get their nameplates. There you go. And we also get a certificate of appreciation from the town. So, in recognition of four years of dedicated service to the town of Florence, council member from December 14th, 2020 to December 5th, 2022, and vice mayor from December 5th, 2022 to December 9th, 2024. There's that. So as Ms. Garcia got the last key from the last council, Johnny gets the first key from the new council. So a key to our town, Johnny. We might need some family up here for this. So as part of it, so all outgoing members had a choice of keeping their laptop or getting a piece of this beautiful art from Baca Studios. Johnny opted for this piece of art, which is one of my favorite pictures that they've taken awesome. So anyway, Johnny, thank you again so much. We appreciate you. Great. Arthur Snake Neal. Where you at? Not that you might not know, but what is the score?
Seven seven.
Seven seven, okay. I knew that he would know. Thank you. Those of you who know, I'm sadly a Cowboy fan, so I am not missing tonight's.
I'm sorry.
So.
Yeah, I want to hug.
I don't know. All right. Today, we have the distinct honor of recognizing and thanking one of our own, a true Florence native, a passionate advocate for our town, and beloved member of this community. Councilmember Arthur Snake Neal has served the town of Florence with dedication and heart for four years, and today, we celebrate his extraordinary commitment to our town and its people. Snake was born and raised right here in Florence. His service at the town council has been nothing short of a love letter to the community that has shaped him. From the beginning, Snake's tenure was defined by his deep impact and respect for Florence's history, heritage, and values. He saw his role not just as a leader, but as a protector of the foundation upon which the town was built. Throughout his service, Snake worked tirelessly to ensure that the legacy of Florence, its culture, its traditions, and its people remain preserved and continues to thrive for generations in the future. But Snake's commitment didn't stop there. He was also a true fan and champion for the Florence High School and its teams. Throughout his time in office, Snake's unwavering support for the school and its athletes was evident. Snake kept the Florence spirit alive and made sure that our community pride and its teams remained at the forefront. Snake, your service to the town of Florence has been about more than just policy and decisions. It has been about love. Love for your community, love for its heritage, and love for its future. Your legacy will live on in the values you've championed and connections you've built with the people of Florence. You have truly embodied the spirit of the town in every way possible. On behalf of the town of Florence, its residents, its leadership, we thank you, Snake. On behalf, we thank you for your four years of service. Your contributions will continue to resonate in this community for years to come, and your impact will never be forgotten. We kind of got to do this in order, Snake. Not that, though, he's got the town, so he has officially the second key to the town. So, so if anything, he's going to try all over. So Snake, keep that for Snake's, can you guys, can you guys keep him intact over here? Anyway, so we've got also Snake, your sign, Snake, you vote. And, and we also have the certificate of appreciation for you. So, in recognition of four years of dedicated service of the town of Florence, council member from December 14th, 2020 to December 9th, 2024. Thank you again, sir. Kristen. I know. Yeah, Snake's really hard to follow. So, but anyway, thank goodness yours. So anyway, Kristen, congratulations. It's both an honor and a privilege to stand before you today as we gather to celebrate and express our heartfelt gratitude to you. For the eight years of dedicated public service to our community, Kristen, your unwavering commitment to the betterment of our town has not only made a difference, but has also left a mark on our hearts and a fabric for our community. When we think of you, we think of a leader with compassionate voice, one that resonates with the needs and dreams of the families and youth. As a young mother, Kristen brought a unique perspective to her role, always advocating for initiatives that would strengthen the bonds of families and create opportunities for the next generation to thrive. Her passion for our own town's families was evident in every project that you championed, every policy she supported, and every conversation she had with community members. Your advocacy for the youth programs have been especially impactful. Kristen, you recognize that young people are not just the future, they are the present. Through your dedication, you've provided countless opportunities for our youth to grow into confident, compassionate individuals who will carry your legacy forward. Beyond these tangible accomplishments, Kristen, your leadership style, marked by integrity, empathy, and determination, has inspired us all. You listened, you cared, and you acted. You brought people together and helped us see the importance of working as one to achieve something greater than ourselves. On behalf of the entire community, we thank you. Now somehow I picture all of these outgoing members with their key running around town tonight, and I'm not sure what all this unlocks, but I'm sure we're going to be following everyone. So we're, Snake is a very bad influence right now on everyone. But here is the key to the town, Kristen, for your work, and we appreciate that. Also, of course, now that you, now you'll always know who you are from that.
Thank you, thank you.
And also your certificate of appreciation in recognition of your eight years of dedicated service to the town of Florence, council member December 5th, 2016 to December 9th, 2024. Thank you so much again. Tara Walter. So thank you for making me cry. So just so, I'll just say this. At the start of my four years, I am the biggest crybaby, so I will be crying tonight too. So anyway. Congratulations. All right. Today, we gather to honor and celebrate remarkable contributions of a true leader, an unwavering advocate for our community and a trailblazer in local government. Tara Walters. After 12 years of dedicated service to the town of Florence, it's only fitting that we take this moment to reflect on and express our deep gratitude for your exceptional leadership and the positive lasting impact that you have made to our town. Tara began her journey with the town of Florence as a member of council, where she served with distinction, including two years as vice mayor. Her passion for public service and her commitment to making Florence a better place were all evident from the start. It was no surprise when she stepped into the role as mayor, a position she held with strength and integrity for an impressive eight years. As mayor, Tara not only content with merely maintaining the status quo, she was visionary leader who sought to innovate, inspire, and lead Florence into a brighter future. One of her hallmark achievements was being the first mayor to hold state-of-the-town meetings, a groundbreaking initiative that set a new standard for transparency and communication. Though these meetings, she ensured the citizens of Florence were informed, engaged, and connected in decision-shaping the town. This was more than a gesture, and it was a commitment to fostering trust and collaboration. Mayor Walters also demonstrated a profound commitment to empowering the next generation. She transformed the teen council from a social club to a legislative council, giving our young leaders a platform to learn from. Her passion for youth development did not stop there. She became the first mayor to host a teen council symposium just this last fall, inviting all teen councils throughout the state to attend, creating a space for teens to come together, find their voice, and discover their potential. This initiative has left an endeavor mark. It's always a hard one for me. Mark inspiring countless young people to see themselves as leaders and active contributors to their communities. Beyond her many firsts, Mayor Walters' tenure has been defined by her steadfast dedication to the people of Florence. She has been a champion for progress, a builder of relationships, and a source of strength during times of challenge. Her leadership has left Florence a stronger, more vibrant community, and her legacy will undoubtedly serve as a foundation for future leaders to build upon. Mayor Walters, your service to this community has been nothing short of extraordinary. You have led with vision, courage, and compassion, and you leave behind a legacy of leadership that will inspire generations to come. On behalf of the town of Florence and its residents, we thank you for your unwavering dedication, your countless contributions, and your commitment to making Florence a better place at all. Thank you, Mayor. So she has a lot of stuff, so she's probably going to need you guys, Jim, probably. So anyway, again, thank you so much for everything. So first of all, we have, huh? Oh, a picture. Okay, I'm sorry. I seen something shiny. So first of all, on behalf of the town, some flowers. Also, your nameplate that you can always look at. Remind Jim, Jessica just showed him. Yeah, there you go. Also, and I don't even know if we want to give another one away, but then another key to the town. Do not go with Snake tonight, whatever he's doing out there with this. A key to the town, so. Thank you. In our certificate of appreciation, in recognition of 12 years of dedicated service to the town, council member from June 11th, 2012 to December 1st, 2014, vice mayor from December 1st, 2014 to December 5th, 2016, and mayor from December 5th, 2016 to December 9th of 2024. Congratulations once again, Mayor. So she also gets the, her gavel that she had wielded for eight years. So she gets that. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you. And of course, her Baca print. So anyway, thank you so much, Mayor, once again, for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you, and good luck. Best wishes to you and the council.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, our next item is item 11A. Ms. Garcia, would you please give an overview of the selection of vice mayor?
Yes, sir. At this time, the town council will designate a vice mayor amongst one of its members who will serve for a two-year term at the pleasure of council. The vice mayor acts in the mayor's absence. The nomination process begins with the mayor opening the floor for nominations. Each member may make a nomination. That is considered the motion, and then the acceptance of the nomination by the member is considered the second. We will take a roll call vote in the order of the nominations. That means when the mayor calls for an open, to open nominations, there could be multiple nominations, but the nominations will be handled in the order that they are made.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations.
I make a motion to appoint council member Kathy Adam as vice mayor.
As such, a second is not required, only an affirmation from Ms. Adam, council member Adam, that she would serve in that purpose.
Affirmed.
Do we have any other nominations for vice mayor? I'm now closing the floor for the vice mayor. I'll need a motion to appoint council member Kathy Adam as vice mayor.
The motion was made by council member Maldonado, Secretary of Dubai, Kathy Adams. So now we just need to call for a vote.
Let's call a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bedford.
Aye.
Councilmember Bencina.
Aye.
Councilmember Adam.
Aye.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Aye.
Councilmember Buchalato.
A very happy aye.
Mayor Eaton.
Aye.
Will you seat your vice mayor?
Congratulations, Madam Vice Mayor. All right, thank you very much. So item 11B. All right. Thank you very much. So, item 11B. Madam Clerk, please read this into the agenda.
Item-
Read my appointments, please.
Item B is discussion on council liaison's appointments.
Thank you. So, before we were sworn in, I had discussions with each council member to understand their interest and what they wanted to do as far as their council liaisons. I prioritized them with senior members, their preferred liaison assignments, possibly the ones that they were in at the time. I also took in account the professional or the thoughts of all members, and as far as their expertise in some of the areas. So, with that, is there any discussion on this item? Nope. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. All right. 11, item 11C. Madam Clerk, would you please, item, or summarize this, please?
Discussion approval, disapproval of instructing the town clerk on the procedure to be used to fill the vacant town council seat. A memorandum has been provided with the county council to outline several ways that we could potentially fill the seat. They're listed one through five, first being that we could, council could choose to take and pick someone from the writing candidates. The section options was given was that the council may entertain one of the members that previously applied and was interviewed. At the request of the mayor, all members have been contacted to see if they would like to continue to be considered for that position, and the ones listed with a yes beside their name aren't interested in the position. The other thing is, we could reopen the position, or we could have any combination thereof. It is at the discretion of the mayor and council of how you would wish to proceed.
Thank you so much. So, as a reminder to the public, we're, this is not something we normally do on the first meeting, but just after the election, a member that was elected had moved out of the area and was unable to fulfill that. So, this created a vacancy for this council. So, at this time, I'll open up the floor for debate. Council member Bedford.
I would like to have new applicants.
Ms. Garcia, could you tell me what number that was as far as the options?
That would be number three, open a new application process.
So, as a reminder as well, is that these options that were laid out for us by Ms. Garcia were just options. We could come up, the council can come up with any, any council or any ideas that they had. So, thank you so much, council member Bedford, council member Bencina.
Knowing this was gonna be on the agenda tonight, I asked Lisa what the town has done in the past. She provided me a list of various things in the past, but I'm a person of consistency. In the last four times that they filled the vacant seat, they had a new application process. So, since the last four times have been done with a new application process, I believe that's what we should do this time, and I vote for number three.
Thank you, council member Bencina. Council member Maldonado.
I was wondering, out of the three, is there anything we can go into executive session to discuss it and then come back out, if that's an option?
On the agenda, just below the notice of a quorum, there is a statement that town council may go into executive session at any time during the meeting for the purpose of obtaining legal advice. So, it would be up to the town attorney if this would be considered legal advice.
So, just clarify what we're, that you want to discuss this option, option number three, in executive session?
Yes, sir, and then bring it back out, out here to the, on the floor.
Mayor, vice mayor, the council would have to have a motion and a second to go into executive session. It is true, we can go into executive session on an agenda item. It's hard for me to know if it's truly, you know, a legal issue. This, this is probably something you could call a personnel matter, and you could go in on that issue, but it's your discretion, and we may not know entirely until we would start the executive session. So, it's permissible to have the discussion also as you're having it in open session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second.
Okay, to go into, okay, so we have a motion to go into executive session, and we have a second to go into executive session.
If you have a motion and vote on the second, if you want to go into each session.
Okay, if you have a vote, please.
Are you wanting a roll call, sir?
Roll call, please.
It was on motion of council member Maldonado, seconded by council member Adam, to go to executive session. Council member Maldonado.
Aye.
Council member Adam.
Aye.
Council member Buchalato.
Questions?
Council member Bedford. Council member Bencina.
I'll support my council's request. Aye.
Eaton.
No.
No. The ayes have it.
Okay. We'll adjourn to executive session. Thank you all very much for your patience. We'll now exit out of executive session and back to our meeting. We've spoken to two, the first two, council member Bedford and council member Bencina, on their ideas. We were at vice mayor Adam.
Okay, so, I'd like to make a comment when I nominate the process I'd like to use. In my six months on the council, as I said, there is so much to learn and so much that goes on behind the scenes because it has to. A lot of these are legal issues that cannot be made public, and it is quite complex, even if you've been involved. I was on probably 10 years of commissions, and I, I thought I knew it all, and when I got to council, it turns out I didn't. So, one of my recommendations I would like to make is that number four on the agenda, which is inviting a former council member back. I think it's important that we address these issues quickly, but with a broad depth and breadth of knowledge of what is possible within this town, right? So, your experience here counts for a lot, and knowing not just the town manager, not just our rules and regulations, but the department heads who are going to have to execute on some of these items. So, for me, I'd like to consider number four.
Council member Buchalato.
I also choose item number four for that very reason. I would like to keep the will in motion and keep things going in a forward direction. So, I select item four.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, we were here for the vice mayor. So, council member Maldonado.
I would also like to go with number four for the fact that what was already discussed is there's a lot of stuff that's going on right now. We have to keep the wheel in motion, and I think that this would be the best thing. Having experience does count, and I think this is the best thing for our town.
Thank you, sir. So, obviously, we've had some time to think about this, and for me, we have a lot of stuff going on, and we've got to keep things rolling as well. I believe that our item number one, or option number one, was to choose from one of the two writing candidates that the voters did vote for. Actually, three, there was three writing candidates. One opted not to be a part of the process. I also like the idea of utilizing the former list that we had when Vice Mayor Adam was appointed, speeding up the process in order for us to continue to do business. That would be my preference. If anybody would want to make a motion on their preference, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to invite a former council member to return to service.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Garcia, roll call vote, please.
Can I ask for a clarifier? Will the party be named, or is it an all call to former council members?
Are we not just deciding on the process now, but not the who?
Okay, is that what we're doing? Okay.
I think that's the-
The process and not the who. Okay, yes. Option four. On motion of council member Buchalato, seconded by council member Malonaldo. Do I have that correct?
Yes, I think I-
To go with option number four and have someone from the council return. I'll call your names. Council member Bedford. Council member Bencina.
No.
Council member Adams. Oh, I'm sorry. I called you out of order. I apologize. You're not, not your time yet. Council member Maldonado.
Aye.
Council member Buchalato.
Aye.
Vice mayor Adam. Mayor Eaton. Ayes have it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, council, for that discussion. So, item 11D, we are not exercising tonight, so we will not be speaking about that. We've now reached the second call to the public. This is your opportunity to speak on items that follow in the council's jurisdiction. You'll have three minutes to share your thoughts. Do we have anybody signed up for the second call to the public or online that would like to speak? Seeing none, I close the second call to the public. Item number 13, call to the council. It's time where members can report current events to public or words of thanks to new members. Council member Bedford.
First and foremost, I would like to say thanks for my family coming all the way from East Coast to see me. I, I really thank you all, especially my big sister, Rieta. Thank you. And also my niece and my two nieces and my brother-in-law over there as well, Bruce. But most importantly, I was thinking about my parents and my grandparents, and I know that they would be right here if they were here, and saying, Sherri, I am so proud of you. I am going to be a great council member for Florence, and I also, I'm gonna fight for whatever we need, no matter what. And I look forward to this journey for four years, and I thank you.
Thank you. Council member Bencina.
Well, I made some notes. So, to the outgoing mayor and council, I appreciate the invaluable service of Mayor Walters, council members Mendoza, Larson, and Neal, their unwavering commitment and substantial contributions to the betterment of Florence during their time in office have laid a strong foundation for the community's future, and I thank you. My heartfelt thanks go out to my wife, too, Rose, who's here, who was unwavering support throughout my campaign, campaign and subsequent intensive research and preparation since July that will be instrumental to making my success. This period allowed me thorough familiarizing myself with some of the complexities and opportunities facing the town of Florence. To the residents of Florence, your faith in me and your votes of confidence is deeply humbling. I'm truly honored to represent you and pledge to work tirelessly to address your critical issues, my commitment to collaborate effectively with Mayor Eaton and my fellow council members to ensure our town's prosperous and vibrant future. I also want to express my sincere gratitude to the dedicated Florence team. Your daily efforts are the lifeblood of our community, and I look forward to a collaborative partnership as we strive to make Florence a great place to live. Finally, I want to take a moment. A year ago, December 10th, my best friend took his life. So, in his memory, I want to make a reminder to everybody the importance of cherishing our relationships, extending compassion and support for those among us who may be struggling. My best friend and I talk probably five times a week. We're kind of like women. We would talk five times an hour. The day he took his life, we were texting. It was Sunday football. I texted him first thing in the morning, wishing him well with his Kansas City Chiefs against the Philadelphia Eagles. They had the Sunday night game. We texted all day long. We had talked during that week and all the things that he was looking forward to in 2006, to include, hopefully, the birth of his first grandchild, which happened two days ago. I texted him at 5:36, and I said, wow, what a play. Kelsey just lateraled that ball back, but too bad it didn't work. About 45 minutes later, I get a call from his wife. Tony, Bob's dead. And I said, what do you mean? He had a heart attack? No, he took his life. Within seven minutes of my last text, he took his life. I thought I should call, but I just texted him instead of calling him and just giving him a little crap. So, let us all be mindful of our loved ones and our neighbors, offering a helping hand to those in need. If you need help, please reach out to your family, your friends, or a crisis lifeline hotline for support. I wish you all a joyous Christmas season and a prosperous New Year filled with peace. Thank you. Thank you. Council member Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor Eaton. First of all, like I said before, thank you to all the mentors that I've had in the last two years. It's been instrumental in my time here. I want to keep this going forward, and I'm here for the new council, and mayor, use me. We're tools up here. We know, we've learned, and we want to, we want to give you the knowledge that we've gained from previous, our successors. And I really want to go forward with it and take care of business, because that's what we are. We're in the business. And I remember looking forward to our next couple of years together. Also, thank you for all those, the staff that made the float on Friday for us. Thank you for the teen council that came and sat on that float with us, and thank you to all the folks that came out and supported that. It was a beautiful time, and just to see the smile on some of the kids' faces was, is a mastercard moment. I'd like to echo what council member Bencina said, be the one, okay? It's buddy check month, so check on someone. If you know they're feeling down, you know, a lot of people sometimes are down during this time of year. Just check and see how they're doing, just, and, and be the one. 988 is the number to call. And there's an option there if you're a veteran. I want to say it's option two, but just use that number. It's a resource. Also, thank you, Chief Snyder, for your support yesterday at the, at the family fun day out at the Army National Guard Base. They just got back a couple of weeks ago, and it's perfect, because I remember being gone from home during the holidays from family, and they were blessed to be back before those holidays, and seeing the kids' faces out there when they jumped on the fire truck, and it was immense. the fire truck, and it was immense. So thank you for, for allowing your, your folks to go out there and support the National And I just want to wish everybody just happy holiday season. Look out for one another. If, if you know of somebody that, that doesn't have somewhere to go, invite them in. And also just, there's a lot of programs out there, folks that, that needed someplace to eat, just have them stop by the post, the American Legion post. We'll have meals out there, too, for, for families or for folks that don't have nowhere to go. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Buchalato.
So I just wanted to say congratulations to you guys again. The time has come where you're seated, and it's time to get to work. So if you guys need anything, always feel free to reach out, and we'll help you the best that we can, and if we don't know where to find it, we'll, we'll help you find it. So on top of that, I just wanted to say congratulations, Kathy, on Vice Mayor. Well deserved. You are just a little bundle of knowledge, and I truly appreciate all the help that you've given to me. I just wanted to say thank you to all the town staff that made this possible tonight. It was very nice ceremony, very nice, and the parade was great, and it was a huge turnout, and everything was beautiful. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and see you in 2025.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adam.
Oh, wait, we have one more meeting, I apologize. See you the 16th.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to welcome our new mayor, and I'm so happy we don't have to keep saying mayor-elect. Welcome to the dais, and Sherri Bedford and Tony Bencina. I feel like we've been talking for so long since you got elected, I kind of have a good idea how everybody wants to get things going, and I'm so excited. Let me just first start by echoing words you heard from the mayor, from our former council members, and especially, I know I keep mentioning you because I've learned so much, but Councilmember Larson, when, when they say it's the greatest honor and privilege, I take that to heart. I truly believe that, and I'm one of the, I don't know if this is a good thing or bad thing for staff, I don't have a full-time job, and I don't have children, so I'm full-time council member, and I love every minute of it. I welcome all your comments. I can only be as good as my community makes me, so if you don't speak to me, I don't know what the problem is. So I welcome all your comments, and as has been said earlier, Councilmember Neal, that we are thrilled to see people in the audience coming to speak. I was recently only at a P and Z meeting, and I'm telling you, it is very difficult, I understand, when you have a serious concern, and public speaking is not your thing, but we had property owners come and speak very well and very eloquently about their issues, and they were heard. So please, I encourage you all. So I thank you again, and I want to thank the outgoing council, and some of the members are still here, for unanimously putting me on this council, and then for tonight, to be elected your Vice Mayor. It, it is such a load of confidence, and I'm a little nervous. I'm pretty confident normally, but I do commit. I will give it my 200%. Mayor Eaton and I have talked for months about putting Florence on the map, and the town manager knows this. So we had our Junior Parata Parade. I've been doing those for probably 10 years, our light parade. The next morning, I get up, and you must have cornered every stuffed animal in Safeway for the pancake breakfast, right? I mean, the crowds came out to support us. We have the momentum. You can just feel the buzz. We are on the map. There's only good things in store for us, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you all very much for that. So finally, from me, so thank you all very much for being here, just sitting with us throughout this meeting, having patience with me as I go along and stumble. So appreciate that. So first, want to thank my family that are here, my brother and my dad, so I told you, terrorists started this. So my dad, who has instilled all that's good in me, right there. Dad, stand up. So my sisters are watching online, our kids, our daughter Kelly and the grandbabies, I think they needed to go, and, and, but having them here, my wife Elaine, so my partner, my support, my check and balance, whether I like it or not, check and balance, thank you, honey, I love you. To my friends and neighbors, I think our whole neighborhood was here, and I appreciate that tonight, our, my fellow Rotarians, and, and every, and all the supporters throughout the campaign, thank you for your signatures, your endorsements, your signs hanging on your walls, hanging on your fences, all your door hangers, we appreciate, we appreciate that support. To the voters and residents of Florence, thank you for your support during and after the election. Your voices, your wants, your needs were heard. To the outgoing mayor and council members, thank you for your service to our community. You've left it in good hands and a good start for us, and we appreciate that. To the staff, Lisa, Bruce, all your staff that worked diligently behind the scenes for the last three months, I think, to make the transition of power smooth so much that I had no idea about what we've been able to do and accomplish. Thank you so much for that, for the staff and for you, too. As I stated many times during my campaign, my, my goal is to bring a nonsense approach to governing. Streamlining processes, foster business-friendly environment for new and existing businesses, working alongside these council members and Vice Mayor, well, we will work diligently to welcome partnerships and opportunities for managed growth and sustainability. Thank you for believing in me and in the potential of this community more so. Together, I'm confident we will create a meaningful and lasting change for the betterment of our town. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.